Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of January 25th, 2021. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have Mayor Pro Tem Salvia lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'd just like to introduce our new Assistant City Clerk, who used to be a member, was an intern here, Brian Denunzio. Welcome, Brian. Would you like to say hello?
Hey, thank you. Yeah, it's good to be back.
Okay, welcome back. So Brian's gonna be working with Leanne, and I guess we'll be attending some of our our meetings as kind of cross trainings, something, so.
Yeah, just learning the ropes.
There you go. Okay, next we have.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Yeah. Mayor, could, Brian, could you just give us a little bit on your background, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, so like the mayor had mentioned, I actually interned for the city of Rochester. I wanna say 2015, and then I graduated from Oakland University, and I worked for almost five years at a tech company called Minatrix, and then found my way back here.
Very good. It's always good to get high-tech people in here, eh? Next, we have public comment. Are there any comments on things not on the agenda tonight? Sienna, are there?
Pat Kane actually called and stated that she would be making a comment. Pat, are you on the line?
Okay, I'm not, there's something on a meeting I'll be commenting on.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm not, I'm not in public. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
Anything further? Public comment?
Um, yep, hold on one second. There is a hand here.
Yeah, you need to unmute the, unmute that?
Yep, they have to unmute.
Oh, okay.
The last digits two zero two. Can you please press star six to unmute?
Last digits two zero two, star six, please, if you can, if you'd like to. All right, well, we'll, we'll move forward. I don't know, Sienna, if you can help, and if, if we get there, we will take his comment. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, next on to the approval of the minutes, the consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of January 11th, 2021.
A motion to accept.
The last digits two zero two. Can you please press star six?
Okay, we, I will do, so we had a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, support by.
Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Now, Sienna, is the person ready now? No?
No, I am, I do not believe so.
Okay.
I think, I think two zero two is Councilmember Peterson.
No.
No, I'm sorry. Two zero two might have been Pat Kane.
Okay. Okay, next, approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of a special event application from Stony Creek High School, music programs to hold the instrumental music fair and the band show on Wednesday, May 5th, and Thursday, May 6th. I think, I think we need two of two to mute themselves. Thank you. Okay. Item B is a consideration of a special event application for the Alpha Vermero Owners Club and the Ferrari Club, my, my kind of people, of America to hold the Italian Happening Car Show on Sunday, September 19th, in the municipal park. C is consideration of a special event application from the Studio of Rochester to hold their dance recital in the band shell on Saturday, May 15th, with a ring date on Sunday, May 16th. D is the 2021 Event Calendar.
So moved as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Councilmember Harrison, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor, I would be in support of this with the expectation that these event applications abide by whatever protocols are in place at the time. I think it's really hard for us to be approving events when we're not sure what the state of this pandemic is going to be at this time. I think we're all very hopeful, but I'd just like to note that it's with the expectation that whatever, if any, rules at the time apply.
Make her motion. Okay with that?
That's fine. That's what was stated in the application.
Okay. Councilmember Albrecht, you're good with that? Okay, Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no old business tonight. Now we're on to public hearings. Request to complete the program, year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program Application, and schedule the public hearing for the use of the block grant money 2021 CGBG funds.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by the Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Discussion. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I, I just have, I wanted to ask our city manager, Mr. Wing, if he would just give us a brief update. And I haven't personally been to City Hall in a long time, and in case our residents haven't seen the improvements, just a little bit of a reminder of how the, the progress is coming along.
Sure. So this particular amount of money that we're, we're seeking would be the third year, and this would add a vestibule onto the front of City Hall. It'd be a glass vestibule that would make our entrance ADA accessible, and would actually allow us to potentially have some space to leave items for, so there, there could be space for like a locker that people may be seen at different locations, maybe a Home Depot or Lowe's or something like that, so that we'd be able to leave items for individuals, you know, during this time period or another time periods without having entrance into the City Hall.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Onto legislative deliberation, recommendation to approve the MERS requested addendums to the city's defined benefit plans. I see Mr. City Manager and Treasurer Maggio are both here.
Yeah, we also actually have HR, our HR Generalist, Joe Allen's on the, on the line, I see as well. So this is the item that we asked last time to actually hold, so that we could finalize a few items that were outstanding. MERS is the organization that the city uses for our defined benefits, as the mayor stated, so that's the DP plans that the city currently has. There's five plans. So we have these with our unions, so police has two, there's a general non-union item or group, and then that, that hits our, our various plans. Our city closed our plans the, between 2011 and 2014, so all of our plans have been closed. What MERS did this late last fall is reach out to all the communities throughout the state of Michigan and asked us to basically fill out this updated addendum to check off the various boxes. As in the past, MERS did not require every box to be selected, so you did not actually have to fill in all of the fields. So utilizing our labor attorney, our finance department, past HR person Holly, and current HR person Joe Allen, and then myself, we went through individually through all these items, and then we also pulled in the MERS representative to make sure. We've matched that up in addition to the 2007 document, which was the last major revision that the city has actually done to confirm that we've checked off and selected all the appropriate boxes. And what's included in tonight's packet are each of the five groups and us filling us out, and then seeking the authorization to allow me to fill out MERS's forms electronically. They use a service called DocuSign, so I'd be filling out these boxes and putting my electronic signature if council is okay with us moving forward.
Councilmember Albrecht. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to submit the updated forms as presented, and then submit them to MERS with the January 25th, 2021 minutes.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion.
Just one quick question there.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I just wanted to know, how, how secure is the DocuSign through that company, or through that group? I just know DocuSign has had a lot of, you know, things that have been happening with their security, so.
Yeah, in essence, this is just checking off the same boxes. If council would like, they also offered me to just scan in the document, sign it, and then send it to invite email. So if that's preferred, either way, we'd be fine.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
So since all the information on the form is public record, I, I don't think an alternate method is required. I think DocuSign would be more efficient for the city manager.
That's fine. Just ask the question.
Okay, further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, on to reports and regular business is a report and recommendation on the outdoor fire and smoke topic. Well, we have the city manager gonna give an update, and then we'll let, if there's public comment, then we can have public comment. Mr. Man, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As council might recall, it was, 14th was the last discussion, or the last time that this topic was discussed. At that time, there were two options that myself and staff presented. The first, just to reiterate for everybody's knowledge, was the option to simply use the city's existing ordinance. However, if there were complaints, the assumption would be that the atmospheric conditions were not ideal, and the outdoor fire would thus be extinguished. The second option would be to use the Grand Rapids recreational fire policy as a template, and some information was provided, and staff was gathering some information on how much it would actually cost us to actually use that overall solution, as there would be required permit process and drafting the ordinance. So there's a bit more involved. Staff, after having that discussion with council on December 14th, was directed to proceed with the first option, which is the, the first one using our existing ordinance. And since that has taken place, I noted in the council packet on page 69 that we've had one incidence that I'm aware of, that a complaint came in, and that did result in the fire chief making a determination that the conditions were not ideal for an outdoor fire, and that it should be extinguished. That occurred on January 9th of 2021. The fire department went out there, and with the assistance of the police department, did have that fire put out. And, you know, so I, I feel in working with staff that the first option does give the fire chief the authority and the ability to require a fire to be extinguished. And so, you know, I, I would present that at this time, staff is recommending that the existing ordinance that's on the books provides the fire chief the ability to evaluate the conditions, and if they are not ideal, determine that our outdoor fire should be extinguished.
Very good. So let's, let's have a public comment right now, and then when the public comment's over, then we can discuss it as a council. So I see the hand for phone number 202. Again, we'll start there.
Hi.
This is Pat Kane.
Hello. Yeah, hi, and thank you so much. Pat Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. First of all, I'd like to thank our fire department, and certainly our police department, for responding very well to our situation. When they were coming up the street, they could smell the smoke a block away, the end of the block. We called, yes, because our entire property had the stench of all the smoke. You couldn't even open a door. You can't go outside. You can't do anything. It is that strong, and it definitely has an adverse impact. After that fire was put out, because not all the information, of course, is in this packet, there is a little blurb that says, the gentleman says he will go and he'll pursue all avenues, et cetera, et cetera. Well, let me tell you what happened the next morning. The next morning, I got a friend request from this gentleman, who I would never be a friend with, on a Facebook page. A message was delivered, which ended up, unfortunately, it had to be forwarded to a few people, the proper authorities, as I will tell you. The email started, and I'm going, or the message, and I'm just gonna read you the opening line, so you know what people go through when this happens, and they merely want some decent air quality. Pat. Uh, here we go. Here we go.
Oh, is it?
I'm just, I'm gonna, yes.
Is that, I mean.
No, you need to see this, because now you're going to know why we need to strengthen our ordinance. It says, "Pat, you and your terminally ill husband effed with the wrong people this time." It also goes on to say that if you want to declare war with your neighbor, you just signed on for it. Yes. Do we feel threatened for our health, our safety, and our property, on our property? Yes, we do, because of incidences like this. This is why people are afraid to confront other neighbors. I have heard from families who, when they put their children to bed after they've been outside playing in the snow while they've shoveled, smelled from their neighbor's smoke. I've been told how they've come in, and they have the same problems, and these are in different areas of our city. When this was first brought up, it was never brought up as something singular. It was brought up as the community, because it affects health in a community. If this was a water problem, the water would be fixed if it affected a portion. We, I'm very grateful for what was done, but the fear that people have is they're going to end up living with low levels or this odor, this byproduct, which will eventually harm them. 2021, a study came out that says wood smoke is now far more dangerous than what they've ever thought. See, now that they've gotten the cigarette smoke out of the mix, they can concentrate on what's happening in the neighborhoods. This is a big issue, a big problem. Public policy now has changed. There are many cities across the United States that are phasing out this, because how it affects an entire neighborhood, how it affects people's health and air pollution. It's damaging. And the fear people have is they can call, will that fire be put out? Nobody wants to have to smell someone's wood smoke. It's their health. This is the problem. It's their health, and it shouldn't be restricted. Breathing is not a choice. So I did have a beautiful, a nice, great conversation with Blaine, and we agreed that the world and the United States is definitely trending to phasing out this type of recreational burning in cities. Several cities have already banned it. Others are phasing it out starting this year, because it affects more than that one neighbor, or two or three neighbors. It's affecting an area, a community, and they recognize it for the health risks, which are much worse than what we're ever given. If we operated on the premise that it's, oh, it's only sick people and old people, that is wrong. It says it affects more of children and onboard children. It affects all ages, and that's something we really have to consider. I did tell Blaine that I'm going to be working on the cities that are coming forward and how they're addressing this in public policy. They say, including the World Health Organization, and the EPA is working on it. American Lung Association finally came forward and says wood smoke is really bad. We need to do something about it. It's hurting lungs, and it's hurting hearts. That's a huge step for them, because they take money from the manufacturers. So they are all going for propane and gas because of how it affects other people, and I just wanted you to know that we were left in a very uncomfortable situation. Do we feel threatened today? Absolutely, we do. Absolutely. And where this will end, I don't know, but I do know one thing. We do have the right to have some decent air in our lungs and around our house, and we have the right to shovel snow without stinking and taking our, risking our health. We have the right to have a window open in summer, or be in our yard, or sit. We should not be denied that because of someone's recreation that they can't keep on their property. So I'm going to be addressing this next from the public policy from other states and other cities. Cities in Vermont have totally banned this already, and that's a wood state. That's a green state. That is the, my gosh, they've lived by wood. That's been banned in many cities, just because of how it affects an entire community. The PM 2.5s, the PHASs, the benzeneite and everything else, is a huge health problem at low levels. Our area smells dirty all the time. There's the smell of wet wood, charred wood, everything you can imagine, but we have underlying where it's never really clean, and that's, that's becoming an issue in this quadrant. Part of it has to do with the zoning, how the houses are being built, and we, we recognize that. But anyway, I will just let you know, my heartfelt thanks to our wonderful departments, and I thank Blaine for his time. We share information, and I'm very grateful for that. And we'll see what happens, but we're not comfortable living right now in our house, and we're certainly wondering, I guess I would say this, if you have to breathe air, it shouldn't contain something that every doctor, every health organization, and cities, and our own EPA, our own EPA says it's dangerous to breathe at any level. You're risking your health. We shouldn't have that in Rochester, and no one should be exposed to it. But I thank you for that, and I know Blaine and I are gonna continue on this road, and thank you all, but I want you to know what we face and what other neighbors face at times, because there is a fear of having to confront people or talk to them. People don't want to do it because of, they never know what's gonna happen, and this is what happened to us. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat. Is there other, Sienna? Are there any other public comments on this issue?
There's none.
Okay, council. Discussion. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. So I understand and feel for the Kanes, for what they've been experiencing for quite some time. So I guess this would be for Blaine, based on conversations that you have had with Ms. Kane. What, what do you foresee the next steps are? You know, are we supposed to be discussing this, or would you like this discussed at a later point in time?
Well, tonight, my recommendation was that council, you know, from council's action on December 14th of 2020, that we continue to stay on that path, which is to allow the fire chief to evaluate the conditions when there's a complaint. And he, he now, through that recognition, has the authority to make a determination that the fire be extinguished. And I know he's on the line, police chief's here on the line, and then Attorney Crot, because we've had kind of a subcommittee between, between the few of us.
All right, well, if I may, Mayor, so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm still not, I wasn't comfortable with those, that, that process the first time around, or any of these times. I'm, I'm more towards the banning of that because of the proximity of our properties, et cetera. To me, health comes before everything else. Otherwise, we wouldn't be in the situation that we are today. So I would, I would, I would like to hear from other council members then how we can strengthen this, because as the Kanes have experienced, no one should have to experience feeling threatened by somebody to, to be able to alert the authorities to make sure their health is protected. So I'm open to hear other people's thoughts on this here, as I feel that I don't think that's still a strong enough avenue that we are taking to protect everybody in the community.
Councilmember Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think that the Grand Rapids model would be perfectly fine. It does allow for people to purchase a permit for an annual recreational fire, but it's contingent upon their neighbor signing off on it, and yeah, it might be frustrating if you want a recreational fire and you have a neighbor who doesn't want you to do it, but at the same time, it would be frustrating if you were a neighbor who didn't want somebody's fire smoke to come into your house and to degrade the quality of life that you have. So, I mean, this is one of those situations. It's a, you know, which side of the fence do you fall on? And for me, I think someone who would be frustrated by the fact that their quality of life, in terms of their health, is, is being infringed upon, takes a little more precedence over someone who feels like the quality of their life regarding a recreational activity is being infringed upon. So I think it's a good sort of compromise without making a ban, and that's, that's where I stand. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. You know, I feel for the two neighbors that seem to be at odds with each other. I feel for the Kanes and the situation that they're in, but I do believe that our ordinance is written properly. I believe that administration has responded to the ordinance properly. The fire was put out, but we now have another issue. So I don't think changing the legislation around fires in our city is gonna fix the problem. The problem is, we have an issue between two neighbors. The Grand Rapids, all it does is create more regulation and red tape that people have to go through. What if the person, what if they're told no with the Grand Rapids process? You can't have a fire, and they have it anyway. Situation, but we've just created a bunch of regulation that forced people to jump through hoops. So I, I feel for these two neighbors. They have an issue, but I, I don't.
Um, Councilmember Peterson, can you, can you mute your, thank you. Just there's some static going on there. I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
I'm done.
All said. Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Grand Rapids permit, and in the language for applying for a permit, it says, "Check with your neighbors before you apply. We'll notify all surrounding neighbors within 120 feet, and if any of them submits a written objection with 21 days, your application may be denied. We'll review any filed objections on the host of," it goes on and on. I also feel this is an unfortunate issue between two neighbors, and I'm, you know, hearing the, the comments and the email or message were, were concerning to me. But I also feel that the ordinance, as we are enforcing it right now, has been working, is working, and I wouldn't want to over legislate this with permits, and if we had the Grand Rapids form permit, this neighbor would go, you know, to get a permit, and I'm sure the Kanes would object to it, which, based on the experience they've had with them, would be that, and would be right back at square one with, with this, that the police would be called every day because they did a fire, you know, because, even though they don't have a permit. So I really feel for the Kanes and other neighbors that are in that situation. I've been thinking about this a lot. I've been thinking about this a lot. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm on a different side of town where lots are a little bit bigger. But if, if, if I feel comfortable that if I had a fire that was bothering a neighbor, that they would come and say something, and of course we would do that. Um, that doesn't seem to happen a lot here, but I have empathy for the east side where the lots are smaller. The backyards are closer and you don't have, uh, and have as much, uh, air circulation to, to let the, let the, the, the fire uh, go into, uh, the atmosphere. So, um, I, I agree with, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia that, uh, I think what administration is doing right now. And I know that both chiefs are all over this and have discussed this. And, um, I just hope we can ease the tensions between these two neighbors.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too share the same sentiments in that the current ordinance as it stands is enforceable and we've seen that in action now. And until that becomes untenable, th- then I would absolutely entertain a Grand Rapids, uh, type solution in a, in a future discussion. I'm, I'm not sure I would be swayed towards a complete ban, um, during that discussion. So the current ordinance as it, as it stands, that is enforceable, um, I think is working. And like I said, until it gets to a point to where we have to, uh, elevate this discussion, I think we should stand put.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I feel terrible for Ms. Kane and the circumstances that she's dealing with right now. This is really difficult and to have your husband, um, unwell during all of this has to just add an extra layer of stress on top of it. And then to receive threats from your neighbor is just unbelievable. I, it's so, so sad for me to hear that that's happening to you. I know it has to make, and, uh, your home is supposed to be your refuge. Um, so this feud between neighbors is really hard to hear about. And I, I feel nothing but sympathy for this situation. I don't feel that this is the, I, I don't feel that legislation is the answer to the issue that is being faced in this situation. And I feel comfortable with how it was handled, um, in the last incident.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. City Manager, do we, do we need a motion for something?
No, uh, if council, um, is fine with us staying with the December fourteenth, uh, direction, um, we're happy to s- stay, stay that course. However, if there is a, you know, a change, uh, that, that council would like to, to make, you know, um, somebody would be free to make that motion and then, you know, we'd follow that direction.
Very good. Uh, I, I guess I, I would just like to reiterate what some other people said. I've said this publicly many a time. I feel for the Canes. Um, obviously the behavior by a neighbor is inappropriate and that's something, you know, that's something the police chief would look into. Um, and I, I live in the part of town where the houses are very close. So I'm very aware of, you know, if your next door neighbor is doing something not nice, you'd like to think that they would not do that anymore, but we all know that's not a perfect world sometimes. Um, but, you know, the enforcement did work. We continue to enforce it. I, I'm okay with us continuing to study the issue. Um, but, you know, as of right now, I, I think it, it's fine. Um, so that's, you know, that's my opinion on the subject. Was there any further comments? Okay, so it looks like we stand pat for now and we keep looking at the issue, um, with the city manager.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is onto the quarterly financial report ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Um, your city manager or city treasurer?
Anthony, yeah, Anthony's actually the, the one, uh, and I believe, uh, Ms. Marcy might, might be assisting him. But I know when they were working on this, uh, together that they, uh, uh, you know, if, if formulated a, a great, uh, quarterly process. And, uh, Anthony's really the one that's, I'm happy to answer questions though, as they've brought me up to speed on it as well.
Anthony, give us some very good news.
Oh, I'm not that good at.
All right, well, just give us the news then.
I'll, I'll give you the, uh, the facts, how, how's that? And i- i- good news is it can always be worse, right? Um, all right, council, thank you, uh, uh, mayor and council. So, uh, we have the twelve thirty, uh, twelve thirty-one quarterly report uh, in, in its, uh, in its usual format. I did have some highlights I wanted to bring to council's, um, attention. And these are the, the large changes that are, um, going to be the, uh, more than five thousand, under five thousand, more than five percent, under five percent threshold, uh, that's been occurring so far for, for this year. On the December meeting, uh, one of the, uh, requested amendments, uh, DDA had, um, approved an additional $250,000 transfer to the parking fund, which is roughly four months of, of debt service, real close to fifty-one, uh, of, of debt service. And they also approved, um, uh, we're, we're going to be coming up due with the parking meters technology aging out, the two G's phasing out and need to move it to, to four G. Um, and they also approved a one-year, uh, payment. We were looking at, at potentially financing that, that it's a little over $300,000. Um, maybe self-financed, uh, due with rates, but that would give us, um, a one year's worth of payments. That project will come forward later. That money was not moved out of DDA, but, but they did approve it, uh, for, for one year's payments. Uh, projections for the auto parking fund, the next large one here. Uh, up to date on, uh, the, even with the transfers and what we're looking at right now is we'll be still utilizing, um, approximately $300,000, a little over of fund balance. Um, that, that's in the parking fund now, which would leave it at the end, June thirty, uh, at $90,000, which, uh, in, in the report, when we look at the, further on here at the, um, fund balance minimum levels, that's obviously below the minimum, but we are operating in that because we all know why it, it's, it's under the minimum. Uh, one thing I wanted to share, uh, to council, uh, which is kind of, I found interesting when looking at the numbers, uh, and I have the percents over here. So once everything opened back up, obviously everything was shut down last year during the summer. Revenue went to zero and we, we knew what that looked like, right? Everything shut down. When we had the, the first opening where it was okay, everything's opening back up again. Uh, that, um, I'll, I'll use the term, uh, new normal at that point in time was about thirty-seven, that's where averaged out to, we got to about thirty-seven percent decrease in comparison to what a normal year would be. That's about $500,000 a year for the parking fund. So the change, if you will, from a normal year to us, uh, to the, the orders all getting lifted, there about thirty-seven percent decrease. Now, now that was slowly getting better, um, uh, kind of each week by week. It was, you know, people were getting more comfortable. They were going back out. It was slowly decreasing. Well, then, as, as we all know, the current orders, uh, which, which shut it, um, the, mainly the restaurants, right? That, those were the biggest impacted ones, no indoor dining. And of course the other businesses impacted as well. Um, you could see it, the day that order went into effect, what that did to the parking fund. And just to give council, uh, an idea of, of what that was, uh, doing the comparison. So keep in mind, we were at thirty-seven percent, so it was down thirty-seven. It went down to seventy-one percent and, and that hasn't changed. And I'll bring up a, uh, um, a sheet here when we look at the, the COVID impact report. So that, that hasn't changed. We, we've been hovering since that's the, the order that's in place currently, about seventy-one percent down. From, uh, for the quarterly report, from when that order was issued to twelve thirty-one, um, that additional decrease to the parking fund for, for that, the holiday season was, uh, just under $68,000. So that was sixty-seven, seven, sixty-two in looking what that, that impact was just through year end. So I thought it was, uh, worth noting and, and worth sharing, uh, just to kind of, you know, it was the first time we could see really what certain restrictions, what those impacts really looked like. And it, and it becomes more important when we can kind of see that and see, okay, well, when we know February one, that's going to start being undone, then we kind of know what that, what that impact might look like. Like what that change in percentage may bounce back to in part, when, when those, uh, start getting phased in. So on the projections you see here for the, the three hundred and five through year end, um, was, uh, under the, the assumptions, basically at least through the end of February, that we would still be down in that seventy-one percent decrease range. We know it's going to take some time for people to be comfortable again. Vaccines are rolling out. If they're vaccinated or not, or they, they feel comfortable, they'll come out. All those sort of things are factors we're going to keep an eye on. Uh, and, um, for the projections, using that through end of February and then having that ramp slightly back up to get closer to that thirty-seven, uh, uh, thirty-seven initial opening decrease through the end of June. So that's where we're at, that we're kind of honing in, kind of that hurricane. We know kind of where the boundaries are. We know what that's sort of looking like as, as we move forward. Uh, the other one that's in here is the pension bond savings that, that council had, um, approved. We have on the twenty-seventh, so in two days on Wednesday, on the agenda for the retirement board is discussions on withdrawals, amounts, different scenarios. Um, so there isn't any, um, I didn't make any changes to the current years, uh, budget with having the savings until we kind of finalize through the retirement board, a recommendation to go to council on, on what that will look like. So once we kind of get a, a idea of, okay, well, this is how much we want to contribute or not contribute. And, uh, a few other scenarios that our, our financial advisors running for us, that'll come to council and then we'll have in the, um, be able to calculate what that amendment will look like. Um, as it will change, uh, the current year and then also, uh, future years, um, as well. Uh, included was through, uh, the end, uh, let's see, I'm going to pull up the current one, just so council can see. Um, I update this usually each week and then, and then share it, uh, about monthly now and as a regular as we close out the month. So so far, uh, the biggest thing we're seeing changing, uh, between each of these, we've stopped seeing a decrease in some of the revenue sharing, that, that went away. The act fifty-one dollars stabilized back. So the, the continued expenses are roughly, um, in this area here, which is the cost for cleaning equipment, mass, you know, all those items which we're, we keep applying for grant funding for. Um, and then obviously the parking fund, that's, that's the biggest one that keeps, that will keep on going for some time. Uh, the rest of these have pretty much stabilized and run out, so we're, we're on some maintenance. And then some parking fund addressing as, as what's major going forward.
Anthony, this is Mark. Can I ask a question while you're on the slide, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Just so I can understand, uh, this, uh, when I see the eight sixty-nine, one thirty-eight parking fund from the start of the event, uh, the start, start of COVID, so you take basically ten months now. So we're losing $87,000 a month based on the impact of the shutdown and COVID offset by the contributions from the DDA. Is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, cool. Yes, y- y- yeah, if you want to average it out, absolutely. I can show you real quick since, uh, you mentioned it kind of what, how the tracking looks. And sorry if this is a scary spreadsheet, I will make it less scary. Um, so on here on this sheet is, is how we're looking at it. The percent change over here is the change from the prior year. And this is all the different revenues combined, uh, which, you know, at the bottom here, you can see parking meters, deck, uh, revenue permit, uh, uh, parking permits, uh, fines, all of those items. So this was the day when that impact, everything started happening. So when we look in the comparison to the prior years, you know, we were hit basically zero revenue for months and months and months, uh, essentially until we started coming back out in August. It looks like we went from the ninety percents, uh, close to ninety and then started phasing down and back, back open again. Well, when we get to the holiday season, as we can see here, okay, well, it started coming back again. You know, it, it wasn't an even eighty-seven dollar, uh, eighty-seven thousand a month. It was, uh, you know, almost all of it was in the beginning. And then we started getting some of that back again as we phased into the, the new weeks. If, if that helps kind of.
Uh, that's, that's a very good, uh, spreadsheet. Thanks, thanks. I just wanted to understand how much this has really impacted our parking fund and.
Oh, absolutely. You, your second question there on, on with the DDA piece, I'll flip to this section because we have the journals posted, um, everything now as we close the month, uh, December out. Um, so when we look at, uh, DDA's, um, expenses down here, uh, we can see that in total, uh, so they had two things that they've basically contributed for. Uh, the, the parking fund is here. So in total, they have transferred, approved and transferred six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight eighty-nine to the parking fund. And then, uh, this amount here, the two ninety-six, six fifty-eight, that was what the DDA paid so that the, um, principal shopping district assessment would be waived for a year. So that was, uh, earlier decision council, uh, approved waiving the, the special assessment. The DDA essentially, uh, transferred this to the principal shopping district, um, almost as like an, in lieu, uh, payment. So when we look at the parking fund, we can see that $600,000, uh, was, was right out of DDA. And that includes the 250,000, uh, that was approved in December to date. It does not include, because the money hasn't been transferred yet, that additional one-year payment, which was roughly a hundred and twelve thousand a year roughly. Uh, once we get the final pricing, we'll have the final number, but it was about a hundred and twelve would be added, uh, to this as well.
So, so totally, we're looking at a after the DDA, so if we're still looking at, is that the three oh five number deficit?
Uh, so we're all the way currently impact to the city. We're currently at seven hundred and three thousand.
Oh, right, but I meant the parking, just the parking fund is like three hundred thousand. I saw, was, was that a number up higher or, or maybe not?
Oh, I'm, I'm following you. The three, yes. Uh, so that I'll flip down to that page, the $300,000 number comes into play. That was from the fund balance. Here we go. So when we look at the fund balance from where we ended from the audit to where we're projected to end, that difference between the two, that's the three hundred, three hundred and five thousand here saying we're at. Even with all the DDA transfers, we're still going to be using about $300,000, um, of fund balance. And at the end of June, there should be, you know, we'll see what the, the full impact of the orders is. Does it go all the way back to thirty-seven percent? Does it stay fifty? Is it, you know, we'll see where that ends up, but using that projection method somewhere around ninety, um, of what would be left in the bank for the parking fund.
So, so three hundred thousand is just for the parking system?
Correct, yep. That's the current projected deficit.
Thank you. Councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, I, I guess just to kind of wrap a little bow around that then. So with the supplemental funds provided by the DDA and the, the fund balance depletion, that means that in this COVID year, we essentially lost a million dollars in the parking?
Yeah, correct. If you look at just parking itself, due to COVID, we're, this is where we're at as of Saturday. Eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
That's a consequence you wouldn't think of with COVID, but.
Was there, was, was there, does anybody know if, if in the latest stimulus, there was any allowance for, um, support of local governments on, uh, parking structures or debt service or anything like that?
Um, Mr. City Manager, I, I don't think so, but.
I've not seen any.
I've not seen anything. Um, I know that there continue to be, uh, push for assistance for local government and will continue to watch that, but I've not, not seen anything specific to debt or to parking structures.
Yeah, I have, I haven't either at this point. I'm, but I even read through the, the current proposal. Um, I'm not sure what's in that. Good on that. Okay. Uh, this is, uh, just showing the, the impact as it happened. Some grant money came in and then we, we continue trending. Uh, this chart here, this is the other one that.
Councilmember Albert.
I, I, no, I, when he's, when I thought he was done, I, I was going to make a motion to approve the amendment. Oh, Anthony, I'm sorry.
Oh, there, there's my key. Speed that up. Got it. All right. So, uh, this last one here, just for everyone's aware, when, when you look at this one, this is showing the net impact by the fund. Where has money from the start of the event gone to? Um, lot of expenses out of DDA. This does not count. I didn't include on the city side what they've done for like the parking platforms and, and any money that they've gotten from the county. I've kept them off of this balance sheet, if you, if you will, type, uh, addressing. So this is looking strictly at, um, kind of how this is interacting and overlapping with, uh, with the city. Uh, you'll see some other notes in the report. Nothing, uh, not counting the parking fund, no major red flags. We had some timing issues where, uh, we crossed, um, essentially over for projects, crossed fiscal years, which happens every single year because projects are never a hundred percent done by June thirtieth. Uh, but, um, we have had some meetings with the PAC for parking. Uh, they have some ideas and things that, that, that'll come later. Uh, but we, uh, I'll leave that with any, uh, questions, um.
Nick, so, uh, Councilmember Albrecht, did you want to make a motion to accept the report?
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to thank, uh, uh, our finance director, uh, Maggio, on, on, on a good year and good reporting in a challenging time. And, uh, thanks for answering my questions on the impact of COVID on the parking fund. I would like to make a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So I think the discussion on parking is very appropriate and I, I'm just asking really all of council and administration to continue to look for any opportunities to get this money from the state, from the federal government. I know it's not covered under CARES Act. Um, and we need our restaurants open so that people come and park in Rochester. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clark, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson? Peterson, I think you're muted there.
Hello?
Hi. Your vote on the motion?
Yeah.
And Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. And, uh, Anthony, thank you and your team for, uh, a very good report. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we receive report from the various boards and commissions. First, we receive a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Harrison.
While the City Beautiful Commission, uh, met two weeks ago, Tammy Byers stepped down as our chairperson and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for her years of service or contribution. Uh, really had a positive impact on the commission, but Rachel Williams was appointed as our new chair and I feel that Rachel brings, uh, a breadth of new energy and great ideas. She's been very heavily involved with the Rochester Pollinators and I think it's going to be a great fit as our new chair for the CBC. Melissa Bavacqua was also elected as our vice chair and brought some fundraising ideas for the commission, um, which was brought up during our goals and objectives. So the CBC outlined some things that we'd like to tackle that hopefully none of this will be surprising to you. I've been trying to keep you up to date as, as we decide. Uh, but we're interested in taking on a couple of prod, projects. We'd like to focus on planting rain gardens. If you're not familiar with rain garden, it's when, um, like it's a runoff area when we get a lot of rainfall and like the water pools there, we can actually plant grasses and perennials in that area to, um, make, make it more cost effective and beautiful. At the same time, dealing with problems that we have with water runoff. We're also interested in commissioning a mural. We'd like it to be painted on the GBD building in the park. We're open to looking at other areas, but we just felt like this was an appropriate space for a mural. Uh, we plan to do all the legwork, commission the artists, get the concepts in front of council. Um, but we're hopeful that we can do a mix of fundraising and council support for this project. And lastly, we voted on applications for a good neighbor award and that should be coming in front of council for a good neighbor to be recognized shortly. Any questions for the City Beautiful Commission?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Next, we have, we see a report from the Principal Shopping District Committee. Councilmember Harrison.
All of the attention went to our chairperson, Kevin Stewart, because he had, uh, just welcomed his new baby into the world. Lily James Stewart was born on January eighteenth at Crittenson. So we were all beaming over that for the first part of our, our meeting, uh, before getting into business, which the PSD did, uh, surveys to see what projects we wanted to focus on. The consensus was for right now, we want to keep all of the events that we did last year and including the new ones. So the magical mural tour will be returning. And even though it was an unusual year, we wanted to just keep things the same so that way we can try again. Um, we didn't feel like the data we had collected from the last year and the events that we had was, was really sufficient to make decisions on events being cut. So we're going to keep all of that and we're going to add a couple of new ones. So, uh, Rochester No Filter is one of the new projects proposed and it encourages residents to take pictures around town and then have their work displayed. And then we also discussed snowman public art, a snowman public art competition. So we are investigating how that can be done for, for next winter, winter. Uh, so as the twenty twenty-one events calendar gets finalized, we hope that next year will be more of a return to normalcy with all of these events, but we understand that this is contingent on the state of the pandemic and the health and safety of our residents.
Very good. Thank you. Any, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia?
Question. So in looking at the event schedule, it looks like the farmer's market is due to open May first. I think that's the normal timeline. And so we'd just like to encourage, I know weather in April can be iffy, but any opportunity to open it sooner, maybe there's a certain group of vendors that want to start early. I think that just gives a great opportunity for people to get out, to support local and it's safe, it's outside. So I think it's a great opportunity. So just if we could look at that.
I'm happy to take that back to the BS, PSD. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Next, we receive a report from the Downtown Development Authority. Councilmember Peterson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, I am still on the road, so I will need Nick to give an update, but I do know that we did speak of the main street, um, Oakland County is going to be sending a representative to our community, uh, to, on Wednesdays, uh, to answer questions and be at the collaboration studio, uh, to help, um, business people, et cetera, down there. Uh, there was approval for one more deck to be done for one of the restaurants. And, um, and Nick, if you want to give the rest of the update, it was also, um, we had, um, informed them of the, uh, Riverfront apartment complex on that, uh, we'll be discussing in upcoming in February, uh, to have the DDA members and business owners, et cetera, uh, learn about that and provide feedback to council. Uh, so of the pros and cons of that is what they would see that as well. So we had um, a lot of good information to be able to review before we make a decision. And anything else, Nick?
Uh, that's pretty much it. I, I, uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, I went over a development update, if you will, with all really good news. It was nice to be able to talk about, I know Councilwoman Peterson in her walk last time noted that we had a lot of dark windows and, and I was be, I was glad to be able to say that's changed significantly in, you know, a month since she took that walk with, uh, I know she was excited as much as we were, uh, giving the report that, um, backfilled space like the Olive and Vinegar, uh, a Realtor, uh, I think it's called New Michigan Realities going in there. Mike Blake started his renovation of his realty. We have a, uh, Detroit Tarot Cards taking over the, um, the space next to the DDA. Obviously the DDA signed there. Um, their lease now to stand Main Street, I talked about. Um, I'm working with Jim Holland to backfill the space at the DDA. Uh, the Bakehouse forty-six got going. So it was, we were able to take off all the things that are backfilling now and we're still, I figured it out the next day, actually down to the barefoot, we're at ninety-six point two percent overall on retail occupancy with the office. There's three big ones that were, um, vacant, the furniture factory, um, the Chase Bank and the office above it. And with those, we're still at ninety-two point three percent. And those are pretty much office facilities, but it was really good news in this time. Oh, and the Macaron Place was taking Irving, um, not Irving Dog, the Three Dog Bakery space. So I was able to give them specifics and share that with them. And I think, uh, that made people feel pretty good that in these trying times, we're still seeing a demand to backfill base. It's all good news. And then Christie went over what we just did, what Councilwoman, um, Harrison just talked about, uh, all the events the PSD was doing, how they're working together, um, to, to those events. And then Anthony did go over and updated them to what we just talked about, about the parking fund, their contribution recognized, what they've done last year. And then Christie talked about events again, um, coming up through the promotions committee and the PSD.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so this is directed either at Nick or, or Councilmember Peterson. So that's great news about the collaboration studio for the DDA, being able to finalize that lease. Were we able to get out of the other lease or are we maintaining two leases now for the DDA?
Yeah, I can answer that, Anne, if you want. It, it was, I think it's up through, it was up through like May first and they, they had to clean out. So they've been starting to do that. So they did not get out of that lease early. And then, but Christie did go over the money that they've made from the retail operations at the collaboration. More than covered, uh, the double rent there. Obviously that would be free money, if you will, but, um, that was their commitment that they should be able to generate enough to cover that double rent payment for the few months. They did not get out early, but Mr. Holland is somehow, the person that I'm working with, um, signs on a month early, he would let them out.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Now I will just add too that they, yeah, they needed to have time to be able to move everything and they couldn't move it any sooner because of Festival of Trees and the other events that had to take place, um, you know, that had taken place. So, um, they needed that space to take care of those. And one other thing too, and, um, my apologies for having to be on the road um, and not be there, but I did run and I will report next time, I did a comparison of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty for all of you on the real estate from residential all the way to vacant land, commercial, et cetera, to give you all the numbers. And I will do that at the next meeting. So you'll know what exactly has taken place here in the community, how it compares to the year before and what it looks like moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, next we have a report from the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had our first meeting of twenty twenty-one on January thirteenth. Um, I've worked with, uh, City Manager Wing. I've, but, and had a schedule of all the meetings sent to him and now with Natalie on board, um, both, uh, the City Manager Wing and, uh, Natalie will have all the meeting minutes and notes ahead of time. So, uh, we're not forgotten. Um, this was our meeting where we recapped our, our fiscal years, our calendar year. Uh, we looked at it. It's not the final audit and one, we'll get that in, uh, February. But it was consistent with the report I gave last month in terms of how we, uh, managed through the, uh, uh, the crisis. Where we have been able to have people come into the facility. Again, they have to be spaced out, only certain activities. Deep cleaning happens all the time. We had a tenant there who, um, is now back in business also, which has helped the revenue. At this meeting, we also elected our officers for, uh, twenty twenty-one. Our chairman remains is Dan Hauser. Teresa Mangioli, uh, Rochester Hills City Council Person will be the secretary and I will move into the vice chair position with Ra-Ra. Um, finally, we have, um, uh, a, a bowling event that can take place. It's going to be February twenty-eighth at Avon North Hills. Why this is a special event, it's for SCAMP. Uh, SCAMP is our summer camp for children and adults with special needs. Um, we weren't able to do that uh, this, this past year and, and, and the way it's done before, but it will be on February twenty-eighth. There's a chance to, uh, sponsor a lane. There's a chance to just go and have fun. So, um, I would encourage you to, 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 uh, do that and people listening and also hopefully in the meeting minutes, uh, this, uh, um, the donations are tax deductible through the Community Foundation of Greater Rochester. So if you do contribute, uh, it'll go on your tax return next year. So, uh, our next meeting is February tenth. We meet the second Wednesday of every month and we'll start working on some of the committee work that was really put off in twenty twenty because of COVID. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments?
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. So I wanted to know, have we, um, gotten applications in to fill our resident seat on the board at Ra-Ra?
We, we, we have not, but I think hopefully by the next meeting, I'm going to have, um, uh, an appointment for council to consider for both Ra-Ra and, um, there is now an opening on the DDA as well.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm still still looking. If anybody has anybody or anybody wants to apply, please send it into City Hall or, or, or contact me.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Ron, to new business referral miscellaneous. First public comment, uh, Siona, is there any? I see somebody out there.
There is no one that has raised their hand to speak.
Okay. Marilyn Trent did nothing. Okay.
Kind of unbelievable, but nothing.
Just, uh,
just visiting.
Just, uh, COVID, looking for something to do on a Monday night, right?
Yeah, I'm getting bored. It's, it's, I've been in, in the house. How'd you guess?
Well, we're always, you're always welcome, Marilyn. You know that. And next we have the check register reports for everybody to take a look at. And then, uh, city manager update, Mr. City Manager. You're on mute. You're on mute, Blaine.
Thank you. Just for the record, the, uh, the check registers are the January fifteenth and the twenty-first check registers. Um, and just a few items for the managers update. Again, if you're following along in our packet, that's on page one oh five and one oh six. Um, just wanted to highlight as the city gets updated information regarding the vaccine and its availability, we'll continue to post that on the city's website and throughout, uh, our social media. I've been working with, uh, Natalie on how we're going to continue to do that. So, um, it's a great help to have her already. Two weeks have gone by pretty quick, but, um, uh, great to have some assistance there. In addition, um, uh, getting feedback, um, communication, um, our, our community survey, we heard from our printer, he actually dropped off the survey at the post office today. So, um, our residents should be receiving that document shortly and, um, we can also, uh, other than, once you get your actual, um, survey, so we mail them out to every household, uh, which again is slightly different than how we've done it in the past. The one in two thousand and seventeen, we actually did to every household as well, but previous ones were just mailed to a sample. Um, there is a code up on the right-hand corner of the survey that allows, um, the residents, the households to fill it out, um, electronically. by going to the city's website, um, which would be, um, rochestermi.org/survey. And then there's the information and the portal that they could type in that code and go right to the survey. Or, um, the households can fill it out, um, with the, the hard copy that is mailed, um, with a self, um, stamped envelope. You could either just drop it back in the mail after completed or drop it off, um, at, at City Hall. We're happy to, uh, then process them. So, uh, the deadline, just as a reminder, is at the end of February, so a little bit more than a month. And, uh, this information then will be processed and shared with city council as we go through our upcoming, uh, budgeting, uh, process. Other than that, wanted just to provide a, an update on the Riverwalk benches. Um, our, uh, Public Works Department has been, uh, refurbishing some of the, uh, existing benches, uh, near the, the library. I know there were some, some questions and comments, uh, in the past, um, and, uh, we've been to do that. And then they've, they've actually contacted the original company that created some of the, the, the benches for some of the slats. So they're able to actually replace some of the slats that were, um, let's just say worn or, um, badly damaged, maybe through time. Um, and so, um, uh, we're looking at, uh, additionally replacing those in the future with that Trex sort of material that will allow these benches a much longer, um, life cycle. Again, that, that material is used from the recycled, um, milk cartons and other plastics. Um, so it's kind of a second use, uh, of, of that material. So, uh, happy to see that, uh, the refurbishing is going on. And, uh, up until recently, we haven't had too much snow, so that's allowed our public works staff to get caught up on some of those things. Uh, Nick did provide a more detailed, uh, outline on the, uh, occupancy actually in the report. So it's speeding through a couple of paragraphs. I'll just, uh, reference again page 105. And then finally, uh, council might know, but, uh, just for the benefit of the public, um, several new committees were formed, uh, last year. So, uh, there's the tree committee, the grant committee, and then there's the master, uh, plan steering committee. Um, Natalie's been working, um, with those committee members and we'll have, uh, information on those finalized dates, uh, for their, those initial meetings here shortly. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, City Manager Wing, I just wanted a, a quick follow-up on one of the managers' reports dated, uh, January 15th. It was nice that you included, uh, the list of all the historical, uh, plaques, uh, that the, the commission had issued. Um, I know we had reached out as the commission to the Paint Creek Tavern. So during, they were issued a plaque back in 2010 and during the reconstruction, um, apparently that plaque was lost or, uh, we've reached out, um, to the new owners, uh, or operators of, of that location and have not heard back. Could the city possibly follow up, Nick or, or yourself, uh, with, with the Paint Creek Tavern to see if they would like to reinstall, um, that, that plaque on that bill?
Yeah, I can help, Mr. Mayor. I, I did talk to, um, to the, the Cruises and, um, they can't, they looked, find it in the basement. They couldn't find it. But they're, they said if the city wanted to provide them with a replica, they'd be glad to incorporate it into the project.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like, sounds like you should get the police chief on that one, huh? It's, it's gone, huh? Case of the missing, like, okay, anything, uh, any other comments for the city manager, uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, actually, yes. Um, hard to believe, but it's time to start thinking about this year's election already. Um, before next, uh, council meeting on the 8th, I will have, um, packets for the petitions, uh, ready to go. Um, I usually like to give you guys 60 days or more, um, to collect your signatures. So look for those. I think I'll probably, uh, work with chief and have those delivered to your home rather than put them in the mail since we're not seeing each other until the end of March and the due date will be sometime in the middle of April. So, uh, we'll have to have those delivered. So already that time.
There's always an election right around the corner, isn't there?
Yeah, yes, there is.
As everybody on city council here knows all too well, right?
That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. A, a, Attorney Crock?
Uh, nothing. Thank you for me.
Okay, uh, Mr. Banda, anything further?
I do. I've got a couple of things, um, pretty good news here. So Christie and I have been working with the Oakland County folks, uh, the Restaurant Recovery Program, and they give out another, um, a little bit scattered, but we helped them focus, um, round of help. So we were able to get, uh, a bunch, we'll call them a bunch, significant amount of greenhouses and the little igloos that you see pop up from time to time. And for free, um, all's the, we, we sent out a survey to all the restaurant tours, got inventory, who would want them, then they work with me to lay it out, make sure the fire department, the building department could, would meet the right standards. Um, and they're eight by 12 greenhouses that could fit six people. Igloos could fit six peoples. Um, I got my first two drawings to be approved tomorrow, believe it or not, inside Main Street Billiards back in the courtyard. They'll take out the cabanas, put some in there, give them a, a shot at opening. Gus O'Connor is just going to put a greenhouse in the back third deck and then we're working with, um, the, the mini house on top of their roof, et cetera, et cetera. So if there, we'll spend the time to draw it up, we can get them the stuff. It comes from Home Depot. Home Depot delivers it to us. We store in the parking garage when they get approved, then it's up to the, uh, proprietor to pick up the stuff, assemble it. And then they have to store it at the end of the year and they, and agreements, none of it will be on, or it's all on private property, if you will. So again, a nice perk to try to help them. I know they get 25% on Monday, but that's not enough to help them significantly. So anything we can do to get them some more, um, room will be great until the platforms, you know, I'm, we're going to bring the platform request from the DDA to at the February meeting, um, to see if we can agree to get those back out on the streets for this year coming up. Second, I, I talked to Councilmember Albrecht. I've got a robust, uh, first agenda for the tree committee. We did a doodle, um, Natalie sent out a doodle request, a calendar request to get that set for like the first or second week of February. And, uh, we'll report back to council after that. Then lastly, I know a couple of you were, um, a young man named Ethan White reached out to you about needing community service hours. But normally that's, somebody did something, chief, I'm shutting down, Caesar can test this. Normally somebody did something wrong and they need community service hours. And if they're not too enthusiastic about us asking them to do some things that aren't that glamorous. Well, this young man was amazing. Goes to Roper School. I met him out in the park. Uh, I only spent 20 minutes with him, gave him the parameters, what we want to do. Over the weekend, he completed the task. He gave us nine and a half hours. What he did was I gave him a, a map that we had done with Johnny Fuller back in 2014, which showed the locations of the benches. Notice bench programs become very, uh, cash good for the city because every time we sell a bench, it make a little bit of money on it. And it's really memorialized, memorialized a lot of different stories for folks. You look at the plaques, who they're for. Um, and again, in the last three weeks, I sold four more of them. We're focusing on the existing bench locations. So we're not jamming benches all over the place. Ethan went out, took a picture, categorized every single name of the plaque and stepped back and took a picture so I could get a perspective where it was, put it on the map. Then we created an Excel spreadsheet. Ian got all that stuff into the Excel spreadsheet and now we have a running, um, sheet that we can send, say to people, hey, if you want to look up number 57, that one can be sponsored. And we, he did all that legwork. I was able to write him a really nice letter of recognition to his. He tried Roper. She was very grateful and we gave him the opportunity and vice versa. We've been wanting to do that for years and he got focused and got it done. So I want to give a shout out to him and his parents for letting him do that. So that was a great one.
Yeah. The congratulations to him and thank you from the city. Nine and a half hours. I would imagine some of us council people watch nine and a half hours of football, but that probably doesn't count as, uh, community service. I didn't think so. Um, Council, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia?
Um, just, I'm happy to hear about the tree committee because even though I know we're getting snow, I'm thinking about Arbor Day. And I'm thinking it will be a great spring activity, be planting some trees and give the community something to be happy and celebrate about that we're planting new trees. So I look forward to that as, um, hopefully one of those first agenda items. Thank you.
Will Councilmember Albrecht be in his Lorax soon?
If you want, Mr. Councilmember Sage, I will do that. Anything to help the trees.
Councilmember Sage, any comments?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Bavacqua?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I was going to say nothing, but after Mayor Protem Salvia, I didn't, I did, uh, that was number one on our agenda that, uh, Nick and I are looking at. Uh, Earth Day this year is April 22nd. Arbor Day is April 30th. So stand back, we will be doing something. And it's going to be better than Rochester Hills. More to come.
I, I always assume that. So, Councilmember Harrison?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I'd just like to say, everybody that we've almost made it through the month of January. So we are getting closer to spring and hopefully things are, hopefully things are going to look up for our city. But I will stay, as I say, that, as I said, the last six months or so, please, everybody stay safe out there. And, uh, let's all get through this together. So now we're looking for a, a motion to go into closed session. Uh, Councilmember Bavacqua?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, uh, without the intent of returning.
Okay.
Before?
Bavacqua's support by Councilmember Peterson. Um, Madam Clerk, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I'm, I'm sorry. I've, Councilmember Peterson, because I didn't see your face up there, I did not call on you. I apologize. Councilmember Peterson, sorry.
I, you know, no, and that's fine. I wanted to actually give a shout out to the DPW guys for working so hard and getting, um, I've seen them out, uh, in the snow, getting the, everything salted the other night and I'm sure they're getting prepared. But, um, those unsung heroes out there trying to keep it safe for us. So it was, um, shout out to them for that. And, um, I also wanted to know when, I'll just go ahead. We'll go into closed session.
Okay. So we had a motion by Councilmember Bavacqua, support by Peterson.
Peterson.
Cause thank you, Councilmember Peterson, um, to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming and we'll see, uh, the council at the, um, closed session in like two, two seconds.
Give me a minute to set it up, but yes.